So here's the regular city commission for a meeting for March 20th. Would you all stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance?
Pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a roll call?
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Vogt?
Here.
Commissioner Short?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Mayor Hines is absent this evening.
We need a motion to excuse?
I move we excuse second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She is excused. You going to handle this presentation?
I will, thank you. We do have a special presentation tonight. It's the William McCullough tribute. Just to give you a little background, we were recently approached by a group interested in paying tribute to William McCullough and looking to donate a gift to the city in that regards. So I invited them to come to this meeting to make the presentation. So at this time, Mr. Wes Edwards, I'll call on to share with you their plans.
Good evening. My name is Wes Edwards and I have been an attorney at Crown Equipment Corporation for 25 years, working closely with Jim Dickey, who was sitting on the square in 2009 when the square was dedicated to Bill McCullough, sitting next to Richard Adams, who's my next door neighbor, who happened to be one of the committee members on the six-person Ohio Legislative Committee to select a replacement statue for Governor Allen, who was going to come back from Washington and be replaced by someone, some appropriate historical person. And Jim, who had worked for two summers in Washington in Bill McCullough's congressional office between the time of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and the Fair Housing Act of 1968, sitting next to Dick Adams, says, "Oh, my gosh, he's the perfect guy." So then started the, what became a several-year campaign to have Bill McCullough selected as Ohio's second statue in Statuary Hall. We came in third or fourth. We came in third originally and then, because it was a public elect, it was a public process. But Tom Edison won and we didn't. But Jim continued to do everything he could to rekindle this legacy, this great legacy of Bill McCullough. So he approached me last summer, I believe it was, and said, "You know, we have this bronze, this bronze casting, Bill McCullough full life statue, and I would, I'd really like to know if Pickwa would like to have it. I'd like to give it to them. And can you find out if there's any interest there?" So I contacted Mike Gutman, who I had worked with from the inception of the Statuary Hall campaign, and said, "Well, who do I talk to?" He introduced me to Chris and the process started, just discussion showing him what we had. And there was a lot of enthusiasm and we were really grateful for that. And so he suggested we come back to the city with a proposal. You know, what's it going to look like, where is it going to go? And we shared some thoughts back and forth, you know, what's an appropriate location and that sort of thing. So that's where we are tonight. So the details on what we have, what we're intending to do, Dan Freitag can present that to you. I think you have hard copies of it, but he can go and explain that to you. Mark Manuel, who's also here, is vice president of, one of Crown's vice presidents of development. If there are any questions on other details, he might be able to answer those questions for you. But I just want to thank the city. Everybody was so enthusiastic about this and Jim was very welcome to hear that. So hopefully we'll move forward from tonight. Thanks very much. Dan?
Thank you, Wes. Good evening. I know you have hard copies, so I'm going to attempt.
There we go.
Here we go. The, give you a little outline of what has been proposed. If you can see up in the, as the audience can see on the screens and on your hard copies, I'm going to point, just using that monitor, where we propose, well, it's not going to work on a monitor, but we're going to propose to put the statue in the trapezoidal area that's just across the street from the Fort Pickwa, the library, the renovation that's done to the Fort Pickwa building. And we picked that space after looking at it, is there's several monuments, there's several things that are in the central axis of the park itself. And so we wanted to set that off so it had a spot for that. Also, there's a central location adjacent to that, but there's electric and other utilities that have to be moved for this, and this seemed to be less disruptive to the park itself. So that's the proposed location. And then the second document that you have, it is kind of a composite to show you how would that statue sit upon that piece of real estate. And you can see a colored rendering up there to give you some of the size proportion, and then just some quick elevations to show you the size of it. There's a figure next to it, a person about six-foot stature, how they would relate to the size of the statue and the pedestal. And then you see a plan of that with the shape. The idea being that we've had a series of steps that could be utilized as seating, you know, that being in a park-like setting, and then going up to set up for a pedestal for the base of the statue itself. You also may notice that the statue is not facing towards the Fort Pickwa building, it's facing east. And that was done purposely to look back at Washington, taking on Washington, looking back towards that. And so that was a purposeful placement of the statue. And then lastly, there's a little blow-up of the statue and the base and so forth, a few details, but also illustrates what would be inscribed, is intended to be inscribed on the statue base itself. So you may, it may be a little small to read that, but it's just very simple. It was just discussing his importance. And then also, that would be on the eastern face, as you would look at the statue, and on the back of it, towards the west, would be his tenure and what, that he, you know, representing the Ohio and the district, would have that information on there. But it's very simple. And then also maybe an idea that the base, the steps, would also have McCullough on there to kind of announce McCullough Park and be another kind of a sign piece for that also. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. That's briefly. Also, we're looking at using a sandstone material that would be complimentary, be the same as what's on the Fort Pickwa Hotel, though we're exploring the materials, but that's a thought in our head right now.
When we were approached about this, we thought it was a tremendous idea, especially to acknowledge the great individual that William McCullough was and to, since the plaza's name, McCullough Square, to have a statue there certainly would be appropriate. So the location and everything works for us as far as the city goes, and we're very, very appreciative of the offer to put the statue in. So I thought it was appropriate for the commission to hear this tonight, and hopefully you'll agree with our position on that.
Well, I can tell you, from personal standpoint, I was very excited when I talked to you about it and you sent me a message. No discussion in my household of the Civil Rights Act is ever complete without William McCullough being spoken about it, and we always talk about him. And it's just exciting that this is coming. We appreciate your hard work and you guys' effort in bringing this to us, and I can't wait to see it. I really can't.
Any other thoughts from the commission or anything?
No, I think it is something we got, on the far end of the square, we have a statue there of Don Gentile. And then we got McCullough Park, which Don was a WWII hero, but Bill McCullough was a hero to everybody.
Yes.
Voting Rights Act and the Civil Rights Act and everything. So yes, what a tribute to that man, and it's an honor for us to have the statue there.
Okay. So gentlemen, we'll move forward then.
When do you plan on having this done?
As a matter of fact, we've got to order all the materials, so we've got some time.
Yeah, we'd like to know, because there will be an unveiling, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
We'll board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda, the announcements.
Yeah, this is actually setting a public hearing date of Tuesday, April 3, 2018, at the regular city commission meeting for, this is a renewal of application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district for the following: Sally K. Apple Trust and Donald E. Apple Trust, parcels N. 44-076881 and N. 44-076907, and parcel number N. 44-076917.
Next thing on the thing is the consent agenda.
One item on the consent agenda tonight's the approval of the minutes of the March 6, 2018 Regular City Commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It had been approved. Old business, ordinance number 3-18, this will be the third reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 55 Stormwater Management of the Pickwa Municipal Code.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is the third reading amending the Stormwater Management Code. The primary purpose of the amendment is that it is to comply with the requirements of the NPDES permit from the EPA. That permit specifically requires the city to have illicit discharge provisions in the section of the ordinance. Other changes made are regarding illegal dumping, as well as, the current code, rather, indicates that a violation would be a criminal offense, and this changes it to a civil penalty, so there would be a fine.
Do we have anybody from the audience would like to talk on this? Commissioners, do you have anything?
I move we adopt ordinance number 3-18.
I'll second it.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Ordinance is approved. Item number three, ordinance number 4-18, this will be the second reading.
An emergency ordinance amending section, excuse me, amending Section 94.01 of the Pickwa Code relating to green fees for the municipal golf course.
Ms. Holtzapple.
Thank you. Tonight, we're requesting commission approval for consideration of a minimal increase to the golf cart fees. The golf cart rental for the nine and 18 holes would increase a dollar each round. The increase would be $10 for the nine or 18-hole value coupon. With this increase, the cart fees are still very comparable to other courses in the area, and this slight increase is expected to generate about $6,000 to $8,000 annually for the course. Golf cart rental fees in 2017 were just over $80,000 and were used to aid in the overall operations of the golf course. The cart fees have not changed in several years, back to 2009, and this slight increase would help offset the part of the leasing of the carts that was approved last time. We're requesting perhaps waiving the third reading with passage tonight so that this change could be in place when the new carts arrive, which are expected early to mid-April.
Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to comment on this? Commissioners?
I asked for comments and got lots of positive comments that want this to be approved, and even got a lot of offers to go golfing, so it looks like I'll probably be getting a membership this year.
Good. Good, good. Okay.
I move we waive the three reading rule and ordinance number 4-18.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need another motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 4-18.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Thank you.
Been approved, ordinance 4-18. Now we come to the new business, Resolution R. 43-18.
A resolution authorizing a one-year lease with the Pickwa Youth Baseball and Softball Association.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. We do leases with football, youth football, youth soccer, and youth softball and baseball. This is a renewal of the lease for baseball and softball. The only change to the lease is that we typically have done three years. This is a one-year lease. The reason for that is because we have that Parks Master Plan. So until we know how all the organizations are interacting, we're just proposing a one-year lease tonight.
And they're okay with that?
Yes.
Anybody in the audience would like to comment on this? Commission? Anything from the commissioners? Need a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution R. 43-18.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution has passed. Number five, Resolution R. 44-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Finley Fire Equipment Company for the rescue tools for the fire department.
We have a new presenter tonight. Filling in for the fire chief is Captain Tim Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We're looking for replacement of our current rescue extrication tools. Our equipment replacement plan, it was allowed for replacement of our old extrication tools during 2018. These tools are 30-plus years old, have been selected for replacement due to their lack of effectiveness at crash sites. So we've obtained bids for three rescue tools, and those results are attached to Exhibit A, which you should have. It's the Rescue RAM, Electro-Hydraulic Cutter, and the Electric-Hydraulic Spreader, which in the bid are better to have in the case of emergencies due to the changes in the vehicle manufacturing over the years. These tools are built to deal with current high-strength materials of the vehicles today and those that are coming out right now on the product line. The cutter that we're looking at has 77% more cutting force than the unit that's being replaced. Also, the spreader is 16% lighter and gives 14% more power than the unit that we're replacing. The Rescue RAM is designed to be deployed effectively in almost all precarious situations, from removing material away from trapped limbs. And all of these tools are battery-powered, allowing for better mobility along with the reduction of noise for the staff and the patient during extrication process. The tools are also much more efficient in cutting and spreading power than the current tools that we have that are 30-plus years old that are being replaced. The Hearst tools were tested, along with other manufactured tools, at a local junkyard here in town, and the tools performed well beyond the expectations of our firefighters. So we're asking for approval of this resolution.
Anybody from the audience would like to comment on this? Commissioners?
Yeah, do these tools have a power pack that sits on the ground, or is the battery in the tool?
The battery is actually in the tools. So now we have no wires, or there's no hydraulics to it, so we can, we're free to move the tool as just one piece. So it makes it a lot easier, more portable.
How long will one of those charges last?
So that's very dependent on what you're cutting and what the process is. I can tell you that we've looked at these years ago, and they didn't have a very long life. However, we were out there probably for a couple hours cutting and had no issues whatsoever. So it's pretty amazing the technology, the battery technology has caught up.
I'm assuming that you will have a backup battery?
We will.
And will the same battery work on all of them?
They will. The same battery will work on all the tools.
Okay, good, good. Good planning.
It's coming under budget, which I like a lot.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion for Resolution R. 44-18.
Do we have a roll call on this, since we're spending some money?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments or requests are to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office. Do we have anybody?
I'll be back, Camp Street. I have some questions about more police presence, especially up on, by Washington School at Sunset and Park. I seen tonight in the police beat in a two-day period, the verse five accident. My insurance went up because they said that there are high accident rate around here. In Sunset and Park, there's probably a near or a wreck there probably every day. I go up that way quite a bit, and that's all I see. People think just because they're somewhere near the intersection that's turned, their turn. I was involved in somebody that got hit up there the other day. The guy just came on through the intersection, didn't stop, didn't do nothing, and that happens most of the time. I've had cars come up through there 40, 50 mile an hour and just shoot right through the intersection. Is there any possibility of having the actual light put there, other than caution?
We would ask our transportation committee to take a look at that. They do the studies and so forth.
I mean, every time I look at the police beat, I see wrecks and wrecks, and there's quite a big wreck for this small of a town.
We'll refer to the transportation.
You have a lot of them out on A Street, too, because you got the two lanes that goes to one, and you got the ones in the left lane that think if they hit 70 mile an hour, they can come on around you to get in front of you, to get one car ahead of you.
Sounds like we got some bad drivers.
And that happens, that happens quite often. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Think we got some bad drivers out there, too?
More than you can count.
Yes, sir.
Riley Baringer, Mount Street. Just have a couple questions regarding the recent house fire over in Shawnee. Do we know how many vacant or foreclosed houses we have in the city of Pickwa?
We can access that information.
Okay. Second question I have is what are we, as a city, doing to ensure that these houses are secured in a manner which will prevent arson, such as the one that happened in Shawnee, from happening? Are we doing anything?
Those are private properties, and we don't have the right to go in and stabilize properties unless there is a problem of health sanitation or welfare to the condition of the buildings.
And I understand that, and that's fine and dandy. What I would like to suggest that you take a look at is enacting an ordinance similar to what the city of Dayton has, which requires that when a property goes into foreclosure, that number one, it is registered with the governmental entity, that in this case being the city of Dayton. Number two, that it be properly secured. Now, this does not mean that the city goes in and does it. All it says is that the owner of the property must register with the city and take sufficient steps to secure the property. Now, that's something I would like to suggest, because quite frankly, that house down there in Shawnee, I remember, I don't know if John and I mentioned it before the meeting started, was made mention of last year when we were doing the mayor's walks down in your ward, that it had been prior, had been previously broken into. And that's just something I would like us to take a look at, because it creates a blight on our community that we don't need, I think. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's now it's time for the city manager's report.
Just one item tonight, and I think I'd previously reported to you that we were awarded by the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission $996,000 for the replacement of the Great Miami River Trail Bridge, which is located beside the power, oh, power plant. We have found out that we probably are going to receive an additional $300,000 for that same project, which would be through the state capital budget if it is approved by the Senate. So that's additional money to go towards that project, which is really good news. So just thought I'd update you on that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Commissioners?
Welcome back, Bill. I'm glad you're looking good.
Thank you.
Hope you're feeling well as well. I want people to be careful tonight. Supposedly, we're going to get some bad weather. After the good weather that we've had, I just want people to be careful. It is Ohio. We could have all four seasons in one day. Supposedly, we're going to get four to however many inches tonight, so be careful out there. I would like to also acknowledge an anonymous student from Pickwa High School who put hearts on all the lockers, made the national news, and I saw it on NBC, but I thought that was awesome. It was a nice acknowledgement that tells me there are good people in this city, and they're raising good kids, because they put hearts on every locker out there, and I thought that was an amazing tribute to the kindness of our kids that go to Pickwa High School. And lastly, I'd like to, everybody to think good thoughts for Judy Terry and her family after the passing of her husband, Mike. I've known those people for a long time, and it just, it's really sad, and just say a prayer for them and keep good thoughts for them. And that's all I have.
Dave?
Yes, first off, I'd like to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to go to the newly-elected official program. I learned quite a bit, and I want to give a shout-out to Stacy Wall, who was a presenter there. She did an excellent job, and unfortunately, she didn't have enough time to do the whole, her whole presentation, because it was just too much information and they didn't give her enough time. But I think she did a really good job, and she represented the city of Pickwa very well. So thank you, Stacy. That's it.
Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, the house that burnt, Sunday morning, Saturday morning, whichever day it was. Do you know when they're going to tear that down?
Yes, we have a contract already to go.
Okay, and is there any way, I don't know how we would do this, or if it's even legal, that we can go after, like, back taxes, the cost of getting the house torn down, or any other issues like that? Is there a way that we can try and get them besides just leaving it lay at the county auditor's office?
There's a notice that was going out today to the property owner indicating demolition was imminent. The property owner has five days to take down that property. If not, the city would take action. There's also a proposed agreement for repayment of the cost of the demolition, so we will wait to hear back from the property owner to see what the status of that is, and then we would put a lien on the property.
Okay. Because I know there's some other properties around Pickwa that are kind of basically in that same shape, that basically nobody wants it. And it just sits there, and it's, one of them I know of is in probate or in an estate that the person that it was left to don't want it, and the other kids in the family don't want it. So it's kind of just sitting in limbo in the city of Pickwa.
We had a very good meeting last week with Commissioner Jack Evans at the county to try to re-energize the efforts to use the county land, to develop a county land bank and to use our reutilization program that we have in place to be able to work with the county to have them transfer those properties to the city so that we can take action on them. And so he was very, very receptive to that, and we're following that up with meetings with the other county elected officials who oversee those programs and have some control over those properties, with that very idea that, as was mentioned earlier, that there's a lot of properties that have been vacant for a long time or in a position, they're still privately owned, and they may owe taxes on them, and we need to get those properties... to get those properties corrected and get them back into taxpaying owners. So we're very hopeful that we're going to be able to move this forward now.
Is there any way to make, like, the house, I think it's on Gordon Street, that's kind of in limbo, that nobody wants it? Is there any way that we can force their hand to say, okay, do something with it?
Well, I'd have to defer to our attorney to see what we can.
Is that the one sitting way back that I've turned in?
On Gordon?
Yeah.
It might be, it might be.
We have to have code violations, and in order to take more severe actions, such as demolition or something, there needs to be a structural issue, a nuisance action, some kind of health code risk to the public. Asetics doesn't count, appeal doesn't count, curb appeal doesn't count.
How about the big hole in the roof?
Well, those types of things, we all give notices for in the time period for the owner to correct it. And if they don't, then we will move further from that. And I don't know what the status of that is.
That brings up the issue, if they're, and what we're going after is there, if there are back taxes on those properties, then the county can for, basically, foreclose on those properties. So that's what we're trying to get them to proceed with.
The city cannot file a tax foreclosure. The county has to. So it would go through the county for that. We would just enforce the code violations. We would give them a letter to repair, certain time period to do that. And if they don't start the work or follow with, follow through, then we would take them to court criminally.
But you are correct that there are properties where there are no, literally no owner to the properties, because of, they've been left to somebody in a will, and the person says, I don't want those properties, because that's a huge cost.
They're still an owner, because the person that died basically still owns it, because it's still in their name.
Yeah, but that's not going to do you much good.
True.
You, in those kinds of situations, you have to look to see if there's been an estate filed. If we can't find an heir, we have to advertise those types of things. But the county would still be filing the tax foreclosure. So we would only be advertising for code violations.
So if we were to find out that basically it was left to somebody, they don't want it, the rest of the family don't want it, is there any way to talk to them and ask them if they will transfer it to the city or something for?
Obviously, they're not going to be paying taxes.
Right.
So if they're behind on the taxes, that's where the county can act. And that's what we're trying to get to.
Well, the only bad part about that is, is if it's paid up till the time they died, it's going to take a while before there's any real taxes due on it.
Most we're finding have taxes.
Oh, okay, all right.
If that's, if that's the house that I believe you were talking about, the house has been tore down. What is left is a barn that's got a privacy fence around it, and there is somebody around, because there's a new tuba, tuba for propping the gate shut. So, somebody is not answering the complaints or whatever.
And there are literally properties that have tens of thousands of dollars of back taxes owed. And those, we're hoping they will act on, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it.
I guess it's my turn. I like to give condolences to the Terry family. Judy and Mike and I, I've known them for telling my age, almost 70 years. We all went to school together. And what a shame. Such a nice person, such a good family. And my heart and prayers go out to that family. And that's all I have. Thank you. I could use a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.